We're all set.
Symptoms no gavel, carry.
Oh, I forgot the gavel, I'm sorry.
It's all right, I'm gonna go over and see if I got it.
It's only the most important part of the meeting and I forgot.
Okay, I'll call the meeting to order. It's the May twenty fourth meeting and as people might suspect today is May twenty fourth. And that's why it's called the May twenty fourth meeting. Let's rise if we're able and let.
The United States of America and as a republic which stands one nation, the God, the invisible, the liberty, just as your honor.
Next item is public comments. If anyone has anything to talk about that is not on the agenda.
Actually, additions.
We're gonna have that next. I'll do that next.
If you do it first, then I can. Otherwise, the person might think they want to.
No, but go ahead.
So we're doing additions to.
We're doing additions. Does anyone have any additions to offer in the meeting?
Surprise. I would like to add to the agenda. A quick, short presentation by Mr. Watson on Juneteenth. And then a very short presentation by. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, you couldn't hear me. Okay. So I would like to propose that we add to the agenda an item where Mr. Watson is going to make a short presentation about Juneteenth. And Mr. Trevino and I are going to join in Mr. Watson, perhaps and discuss workshop that we went to last night, which of which this Juneteenth announcement is an outcome. So we're all better for it. Thank you. But actually, you don't speak yet, so sorry, Mr. Watson. We need to vote on whether we want to add this to the agenda. So I propose that we add it to the agenda right at.
And so that's a motion.
Pardon?
That's a motion, right?
It's a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion? All in favor?
I.
Opposed? Okay, we're now ready to go.
And then you have to decide where in the agenda it's going to be.
Why don't you put it after public comments before gavel?
Well, that's what we talked about, yeah. Thank you.
I have an idea. Why don't we put it right after public comments?
Like right now? Well, public comments first. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, and is there anyone who has anything else to add to the agenda? Okay, now it's time for public comments. Has anyone on the Zoom call had any comments? Anyone here in the large audience? Any comments? Even if you're thinking of making a comment. Okay. So we'll proceed.
Item. Item.
The item that was just added.
That we just added. I'm trying to get it over. So, Mr. Watson. AKA Terry Watson.
Robert rules the forum. So I will be really short again. I appreciate the time to discuss Juneteenth. And one of the things I would mention too is that Senate County has been participating in Juneteenth for the last past three years. And so I wanted to bring this to Patent Township and to see how we can also join Senate County. So for those who don't know, Juneteenth marks a commemoration in which the Union Soldiers on June nineteenth, eighteen sixty-five, in Galveston, Texas, announced to the enslaved Black Americans that they were free. Rightfully so, this occasion is known as Freedom Day, Black Independence Day, the Emancipation Day, and so on and so on. Although they're celebrated in Galveston, Texas for decades, in two thousand and nineteen, the Pennsylvania Governor Tom Wolf signed into legislation the Declaration of June nineteenth as Juneteenth National Freedom Day, which was an annual observation in Pennsylvania. And in two thousand and twenty-one, the President of the United States signed it into law to make it a federal holiday, which we now celebrate every June nineteenth. In Senate County, although initially canceled due to the pandemic, the State College NAACP held its first hybrid Juneteenth celebration in two thousand and twenty. We had folks that that was downtown celebrating and myself and my colleague Leslie Lang was online providing aid for those who could not attend in person due to the pandemic. And we asked the elders, we asked politicians, community members, all to come together to celebrate the significant contribution of African-Americans in their freedom movement in America. So this was follow-up with a Juneteenth celebration in two thousand and twenty-one, which we were so happy to do together all in person. And in two thousand and twenty-two, now funny thing about two thousand and twenty-two is that myself and my co-chair Leslie, we both were not in town for Juneteenth, so she went away and I went away, but it still continued and I heard it was a great, great success. So we're back in two thousand and twenty-three. So this year, I want to share with this body what we're doing in two thousand and twenty-three and propose ways that Patent Township can be join the fellow State College municipalities in celebrating Juneteenth. So in two thousand and twenty-three, we are going to have the celebration on the Saturday, which is, am I right? I should have wrote this down. What is the Saturday? How many is Saturday? The Saturday?
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth, okay, thank you. The seventeenth, we're gonna have vendors, we're gonna have businesses, dance, you know, poetry, music, et cetera, et cetera, food, which is going to take place on Fraser Street downtown by the MLK Plaza. In addition to that, the night before Friday, we are going to have the Juneteenth Art Exhibition, which is a contest for young kids from K through twelve and also adults. And we're still looking for artists to participate in that. And throughout the time, we are going to really celebrate again in Senate County. We have the, we have different municipalities, different businesses, Penn State University that's gonna also contribute. And since it became a federal holiday, we definitely had way more participation than when we used to do this in two thousand and twenty. So I would ask that Patent Township consider a couple of things. One, we need volunteers, so people, people is one that's never underrated. We still need volunteers to help tear things down. We need a lot of volunteers for the art gallery to help with the art gallery, even though the art gallery, beginning of the art gallery is gonna begin on that Friday, it's gonna be open throughout the whole week so people can't see the art until it's closed. You can sponsor an hour, so again, because we have a lot of folks coming from out of town to take part in our celebration, you can sponsor an hour. You can sponsor a water station, this is hot outside, right? And we want people to be hydrated. So either by donating bottled water. And the fourth thing is to participate. It is a fun event, it is a time for us to recognize the emancipation that took place, again, the history of our country. And it really is an educational event as well as a celebration. So just to participate, let our residents know that it exists and definitely join the festivities. So with that said, I thank you for the time and I'd be more than happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Hi, Terry. If you don't mind just giving your name and that you are a Patent Township resident.
I'm a resident person that comes from town. It was funny, I was saying last night, I presented at almost every municipality, but Patent Township is actually where I actually live. So I am a resident of Patent Township and I've been a resident of Patent Township since.
Swish, swish, swish.
I'll be running around that whole day, doing multiple things, of course, but one of my responsibilities is to actually sort of be, sort of not be in charge of, but definitely to make sure that the stations and the vendors are running smoothly, so.
Great. So if I might, there's also, another way that I believe we could support the event is to underwrite essentially the cost of an hour and that is about two hundred and fifty dollars. I don't know. So there are a couple of options that we could do in ways of supporting and.
And I think, I think I submitted two links for the volunteers as well. So again, I know I was joking about this last night, I wish that Patent Township had like the Patent Township swag, like, you know, you know, the town of Patent Township, whatever it may be, so we can show the representation there, maybe something for the future to think about. It's not Patent Township swag, but really, to have a presence there would be very, really important, I believe, just because it's something that is celebrated in Senate County and it's something that is relatively new in Senate County, I'm only about three years old celebrating it, but it's something that we want to make sure it gains momentum every single year, so.
So I would.
Would this be something we'd introduce as a motion now or somewhere else in the meeting?
You could do it now if you wanted to, that's fine.
So I would. Do you want to make a motion?
I wanted to ask Larry, is it possible that we can do the two hundred and fifty out of our budget?
Sure, yes.
Okay. My other question. No, let's vote, let's vote on that now.
Okay. Then I'll make a motion that we support the Juneteenth that is being held countywide but taking place in State College with a donation of two hundred and fifty dollars, which will essentially underwrite the production of an hour of that performance and program.
Now second it.
When moved and seconded, is there any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
I.
I'm opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously.
Mr. Chair, I would, I would only ask that maybe Mr. Williams could send me where we're gonna send that.
Absolutely, yes. Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Thank you.
It is not going to me, by the way, so.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair? Yeah. I also want to add on to what Terry has said to our community. Most people think Juneteenth is about people of color. It is not. This celebration brings all of our residents together as one, as it should be. And Terry can attest how we work together, how the different celebrations each year brings all of our municipalities together. I think other of the officials have joined in, I'm usually out of town doing Juneteenth and celebrating it elsewhere, but this year I think I'm gonna be here, so I would also be a part in getting the word out. But so often we forget when we see individuals of color presenting things that it's not inclusive. But Juneteenth is about all of us, each and every one of us. And as we come together to celebrate freedom, this is a great celebration to bring our youth involved and just everyone to come out and to enjoy just being together. So Terry, to you and Leslie and to the group, we say thank you.
Thank you. The work is not done. When you look at the timescale at which things happen, for example, the Egyptians had a pyramid scheme thousands of years ago, which involved slavery. And in the local area, according to some of the people who've done research at the Center Ferns, imagine that there was some slavery up as far as south central Pennsylvania in the eighteen twenties and thirties, a little more concentrated in the southern part of the state. And even more recently, there's a singer, not all that well-known, but his name is Ragged Bone Man, and he has a song in which he says, "People still need cash to buy their freedom", which is the case in some parts of the world. And so we're not done, but this is a good thing to celebrate.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I'd just like to continue to the next part of the agenda item that I introduced, which is a very brief discussion of the workshop that Mr. Trevino and I were able to attend last night. And I might add that of the other, all five board members were asked and three had previous commitments already in place months ago. So it was just me and Dan who represented. But I guess I can start and you can fill in, or you can start since you're ready.
Yeah, I'll just briefly say the workshop last night was sponsored by the Anti-Bias Coalition of State College, Center County, whatever. And it was a intended, directed at municipal officials. And the intent was to educate us and to have us engage in brainstorming related to ways our municipalities can promote diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging activities, events, education, et cetera. So we had great facilitators. Helped me with their names. Virginia Squire was one of them and.
And Lori.
Lori.
Lori McGinty or something. Anyway, sorry, Lori. Passing on, singing along, I can't remember your last name. Anyway, we felt it was very productive use of our time. It was, what, about three hours long, something like that. All municipalities were represented by municipal officials. And if you want to go into detail, go ahead.
Sure, just some of the topics we talked about are, were ways that we would want to change our respective municipalities to make them more inclusionary. One that Terry brought up was simply reaching to deaf community, making sure that meetings are accessible and perhaps providing captions under CNET productions. And, but each municipality kind of looked at ways that we could cast a broader net and make, and allow for more comfort or attention or information that is accessible to everybody. So it was a sort of a bottom-up discussion, very inclusionary. And I just want to add that the Anti-Bias Coalition is a subset of the Campus and Community Unity, which has been in operation much longer than that, so. Very productive time. And I also see this opportunity, bringing Terry in to talk about Juneteenth, as a way to restart or re-jumpstart our efforts to have diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging, or D, D E I B moments in this agenda. We do, we try to be a very inclusionary community. Our township motto, "Place for All" suggests that, but it's always important to bring that to the front burner and keep it there. So thank you so much for the presentation. Thanks for your one last line. Great.
Thank you. Anyone have any comments or reaction to what you've just heard? Okay, hearing none, off.
Mr. Chair, are we going to do a proclamation or because it is a national holiday, we don't need to?
Well, we don't, okay, so we don't have a proclamation ready to...
Present.
Present, and we didn't have one, we thought we had one.
Here we go. Uh, next slide, please. So we just wanted to give you a general update on where the local match, um, process is. Currently, the member municipalities, these are the folks who have representatives on the Board of Directors at CADA, Harris, Ferguson, college townships have approved their match for this year. Uh, State College is going to be considering their match on the 5th of June. The contract municipalities of Belfont...
Excuse me, one second, we've got an echo that we want to get rid of.
Yeah, they're giving my feedback.
Could be a technical problem.
Is it?
I could talk softer if you'd like.
No, no. Okay, we should be okay now.
Good?
Yeah, muted.
Okay. So the contract municipalities, these are the municipalities we serve that are not members of the, uh, the CADA system, that'd be Belfont, uh, Veteran Spring Townships, they've also passed their resolutions for the year. So you folks and State College are the two remaining to pass. One thing we do want to report is that Spring Township has decided that, uh, they are unhappy with the current arrangement, so they're going to be leaving the CADA system at the end of this coming fiscal year. So hopefully we'll be working with them during the year and we can prevent that from happening. So wanted to give you just a general reminder of the CADA service, uh, within the township. Sorry about the, the light, but this is your area, we operate the H, H U, N, N E, N V, W, and Atherton Connector routes in the township. We also have CADA Ride service, which is our paratransit service for folks with disabilities, and our CADA Go service, which is our new, what we call microtransit, it's a demand response service, which we transitioned to that, um, I think two years ago for some areas in the township, and it covers 2.9 square miles of Patton into, uh, the dark blue, I'm not sure how well you can see it, that's the CADA Go service area, and then the routes are the brightly colored lines there. Next slide, please. So want to talk to you a little bit about ridership, but we wanted to talk with you about one of the challenges that we have whenever we're asked what seems like a very simple question, how many people in the township ride CADA service? This is kind of what happens, you can see from the map on the left, oh, thank you very much, uh, you can see from the map on the left, uh, sometimes our routes are our stops and we have to count our service by boardings and alightings by stop. You can see that although that route is in Ferguson Township and the stops are in Ferguson Township, the fact is, is that most of the people who get on and off those buses live in Patent Township. So when we're counting, if we say, well, these are the boardings and alightings in your township, they're not necessarily your residents. So what we've tried to do is we come up with these numbers, is try to look at the area and see where are the residences, so where are the people who actually are coming to ride the bus to accurately count, you know, what your citizens are doing on the system? So, and the example of the difference here, if we were to look at just counting people by stop, those are the two columns on the left and for just these stops here, and if we were to add the Viro stops that are in Ferguson Township actually to the Patton numbers, because they're mostly Patton residents, you can see those numbers are significantly higher. So I wanted to explain that concept before we go to the next slide, which is our ridership in the township, and that's, this is including those Viro Boulevard stops that are actually, um, just out of the township. So you can see, um, route by route, um, boardings and alightings, some people would ask, why are those numbers different? Don't people get on and off the same, um, stop? Sometimes they take different routes in versus going home, but you can see there's quite a bit of service and actually these numbers are higher, I was told by our service planner who did this analysis that he made a mistake. So, um, the V and the VE should be significantly higher than they are now, so, I didn't have time to change the slide before the presentation, but quite a lot of service in the township. Next slide. In addition to fixed route service, which is the, the buses that run the routes, CADA Ride ridership, we have 31 registered CADA Ride patrons, um, in the township, 16 are registered under the Americans with Disabilities Act rules, and 15 are registered under the state-funded lottery program. It's really two different programs run by CADA Ride, and we did 2247 trips last year. And about 25%, about a quarter of them were medically related, and the rest of the trips were employment, shopping, education, and other personal purposes, so quite a variety of services. So some changes that we're proposing to the area, um, currently our CADA Go hours of service, uh, because it was an experimental new service, they were somewhat limited, we were only offering, offering service from 6:00 AM to 10:00 AM with no midday service, and then again from 3:00 to 7:00 PM. The reason for that was that's what the fixed route buses that the service replaced were running, so it was mirroring the same service times. We're going to, in fall 2023, which is actually the end of August, whenever we go back to full service, we'll extend the hours entirely from 6:00 AM to 8:00 PM with no midday gap, so it'll be a fairly significant expansion of service. We're also combining the northwest and southwest zones of CADA Go, they're currently two separate zones and we're going to combine them, so it should make travel within those zones much easier, passengers using CADA Go, so that we don't need to transfer anymore. Excuse me. In case you're curious, this is a pretty busy map, but it gives you an idea of where people are traveling to and from on CADA Go. The more the color goes toward red, the more, uh, people are boarding at that location, and bluer are less boarding, so you just kind of get a sense from this map of where people are getting on CADA Go services, and then we have a similar map, next slide, for the destinations. So when people are using CADA Go, where are they traveling to? Trader Joe's, Champs, pretty popular, um, Sheets, Park Elementary School, so just a sense of that, and of course, this is going to be probably a lot brighter next year with the expansion of service. So overall, talking about our proposed budget for the coming fiscal year, our cost per revenue hour, system-wide, is about $117 an hour for our fixed route service. For CADA Ride service, we pay 7681 an hour, and CADA Go is 6811. For CADA Ride, I'm sorry, that's incorrect, 7681 is per trip. Our services for paratransit, because they're a much more highly specialized service, it's a much more expensive service, so that's 7681 per trip. The CADA Go service, we pay per hour, so the more people we have coming in and using the service, the more we can share rides, the cheaper our per-ride cost gets. And to break down our overall budget, total, um, 25, almost 26 million for the coming year, and most of that is covered by federal and state subsidies, that's the blue area down at the bottom. We get contract revenues from apartment complexes who contract with us for dedicated service for students to go to and from the campus, that's, uh, just over $5 million. Our fare box revenues, this is the money people pay to get on the bus and to ride the buses with passes, that's just under $2 million. Um, and our local match, which we're asking you folks to approve tonight, is, uh, 774,000, so although it seems like a fair bit of money in terms of the overall cost of the system, it's a, a fairly small portion. Um, really the purpose of the local match is to assure the state and the federal government that the community cares about the service enough to pay something into it. Um, and unfortunately, this year we are running a deficit of 1.8 million dollars. Now, we have money left over from, um, CADA, I'm sorry, from federal, um, COVID stimulus, which we're using to fill this deficit. Some of the reasons for the deficit, excuse me, our ridership hasn't fully recovered from COVID. Penn State still has a lot of remote working people, and we're seeing changes to the travel patterns in the community, so we're still trying to refine our services. Excuse me. So for our local match, just to give you a sense of kind of how this breaks down, for every dollar that you contribute, we get $20 from the federal and state system. And, um, yeah. That's it, any questions? Yes?
I didn't see Toph trees on your maps.
Um...
For the CADA...
Yeah.
The Toph trees are not in...
It's not in CADA.
It's not in the region, CADA.
We have fixed route through Toph trees.
That's right.
The microtransit really doesn't, it's not so much for density areas that we're on the system, and that's why the fixed route is pretty, sort of well-qualified fixed route Toph trees.
Yeah, those are good routes. We, we don't want to change those routes. Where we consider the, uh, microtransit are some routes where they're very unproductive, essentially the routes where we get calls from folks like you saying, "Why is that bus running empty?" So we look at those routes and we transition those to microtransit.
Thank you.
Sure. Good question.
Any other questions? Dan?
Uh, how are we doing on recruiting drivers? Are we back up to full staffing from pre-COVID or are we still below that?
We're still working on it. We have just enough drivers, we think, to start service in August, or should say we will be, we're now, of course, in the summer cutback, um, so plenty of drivers right now, but we are actively recruiting and it will be tight, but we think we're okay. It's, it's incredibly competitive, not only here, but nationwide. We were, uh, I was just out in Minneapolis at a conference, and they were saying that they were down, um, what was it, 30% drivers, so it's, it's tough.
About 10 drivers is what we counted.
Yeah, well, we're, we're down just about 10%. Um, we have some folks who are in training right now and some people that we're recruiting, so we think we'll get that going.
Remember a few years ago, um, we learned that, uh, CADA Act ridership was actually the third or fourth largest numerically in the state, is that still about the case or...
You know, it depends how you count. Um, I think we would say, yes, we're still the third largest system in the state. Rabbit Transit is a kind of a system of a collection of transit systems, started down in York and it's kind of growing around the state. If you count all their numbers together, they provide more service than us, but they're in multiple locations, so, yes, we're still third.
Reason I bring that, brought that up is we, uh, had to bring that up to one of our federal legislators at the time who didn't want to support mass transit, and somebody told the person, that's not anyone that's in office now, that it was the third, this was the third largest one, and he fortunately changed his mind on whether, whether he was going to support it, because he was, well, it's only for Philadelphia and Pittsburgh, and that's, that's not the case.
Yeah, it's essential here, for sure.
Anyone else? Okay.
Nah. Larry, um, can you give you, give us our match, what we're...
What we're, what we're, uh, given right now? I can try, if, if I can, um...
I'm looking at what we're being asked to contribute in Operation Support, it's 112,326.
So I can tell you that, um, the discussion piece has been, it's a 5% increase for Patent Township, plus, um, the contract municipalities and Harris Township are not contributing, Harris Township's just doing the 5%, the other four of us are going to help cover the difference, uh, for the three contract municipalities. So it is a 5%, a little bit more than a 5% increase for us for next year.
Okay.
Okay, now, do we have a motion that we're supposed to?
Yes.
Okay. So would anyone like to propose a motion?
So move to propose a motion.
And this would be to supply our, our match on schedule.
To adopt the resolution, yes.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll say.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I'm opposed? That's none? All we have to do is fork it over.
Thank you very much, we appreciate your support.
Thank you all for the work you do. Now, the next item is B of this section, and it's the draft of the amended regional growth boundary and sewer service area.
Thank you, good evening, it's good to be here, my name is Jim May. I'm the planning director for the Center Regional Planning Agency, and tonight I just wanted to present some changes that we're making to the RGV and SSA implementation agreement. Back in 2018, uh, actually 2013, we wrote into the agreement that we will revisit it every five years, uh, to make sure it's up to date with what we're doing in the region. So before I get to the details on that, I would like to just remind you about what the big picture is in term, in terms of the RGV and SSA and why we have that agreement, and it's because this region decided a number of years ago that they wanted to direct most of the higher development and intensity of growth into certain areas in the region. We also wanted the ability to preserve farmland, and one way to do that is obviously to control where you grow, and that's the regional growth boundary, and where you provide public sewer, and that's the, that's the sewer service area. So this has done a couple of things that's helped us preserve the communities that want to remain rural, it's helped us utilize the existing sewer infrastructure in the region for the most part, some of it has to be upgraded as it would normally be upgraded, um, during any kind of growth, uh, scenario. Uh, we also wanted to be able to align how we grow with the capacity at the UHA Treatment Plant, so that was a big, big thing for us as well. It's helped us to preserve, uh, many of the source water protection areas that we have around our groundwater and other environmental resources in the region. And finally, the things I want, I want to point out is that this really couldn't be done without regional cooperation, we really need all six municipalities participating in this to make it work, so you can work with each other and decide where you want to grow regionally. So where are we today as a result of the agreement and some of the actions that the municipalities have taken? Um, most new building permits are issued inside the RGV and SSA. Um, there is development, adequate development capacity, every five years we also do what we call a development capacity report, we inventory how much vacant land is inside the growth boundary and sewer service area, uh, align that with our growth projections for the next 20 years and, and we have an adequate supply of land as well. Uh, as far as the UHA Treatment Plant goes, they are currently permitted for over 10 million gallons a day of treatment, and they're using just about half of that at this point in time, and over the next, uh, five years, they expect a little bit of growth up to 5.7 million gallons per day. Uh, we still continue to do a job protecting source water, farmlands have been preserved as well, and finally, um, the agreement helps municipalities implement regional goals by helping communities that want to grow, grow, and communities that want to remain rural, stay rural, so. Um, as far as the agreement goes and the assessment of the existing agreement, um, it's meant to be rigorous, it's not an easy process. If we have somebody come forward to us that wants an expansion, uh, we have them go through a process and tell them why they want to do it, what is the benefit to the community, what are the impacts on, on the other municipalities in the region? We don't have a requirement to do this inside the growth boundary because that's where we want to grow, so we don't make anybody go through that process, and that, that accelerates that timeframe for getting projects approved. Um, and as far as some of you go on the board here, some of you have probably never been through a formal process because we haven't had a real request in a number of years, and so that's a little confusing, so we try to do a little program of keeping everybody educated on this. We also continue to have the growth boundary and sewer service boundary be the same line, uh, and that's basically because, uh, growth should really control where public sewer goes, and so we want to keep those together and align the best we can. And of course, it requires participation from all six municipalities because, uh, we want you all involved, because your water gets protected, if there's a well in other municipality, I know there's wells in this community as well that, that you work hard to protect. So let me tell you what has stayed the same, uh, the first two things on this slide have stayed the same, and these are important, because the first decision point in this uh, still stays with the municipality. You decide whether or not, if somebody comes to you with a request to expand the growth boundary sewer service area, the municipality decides whether or not they want to... decides whether or not they want to move that forward to the region. If you don't want that project to move forward, you can, it dies, it doesn't move forward. So you still have that. We also require the five of all the six municipalities approve an amendment to move it forward. The three points there actually stayed the same until we decided to change them, so they really belong on the next slide. But the big one is there's really no substantial changes. We cleaned up some of the language in the front on the authority and the effective date. We moved some of the exceptions to the front of the agreement. And the agreement also had a lot of background material. We prepared an item that was in your agenda this evening called the RGV SSA at a glance, which is a little bit more friendly way to read about it rather than going through a legal agreement. And we also had something called a limited review process, but that was replaced by a provision that allows the municipalities to expand the growth boundary sewer service area in your municipality on a limited basis without having to go to the general forum. So that provides you some flexibility. If you have a smaller project that really doesn't have a regional impact, you can move that forward at the municipal level. So, those are the big things I have for you this evening. What I wanted to do was address any comments or questions that you might have this evening. I'm going to go forward to the other municipalities. We'd like to move this to the general forum sometime in the late summer, early fall, because we will require a resolution from each municipality to get this finalized, and we generally do that at a general forum meeting. So, I'd be happy to address any comments or questions.
Any comments, questions, concerns, fears, consternation?
One of those. The most recent slide, you talked about replacing limited review process with minor requests.
Yes.
Was, it seems to me that that language could be open to a slippery slope. Maybe not. If it hasn't been a problem, why imagine that it could become a problem? But how would you define minor requests? I know you said it doesn't have an impact on the larger regional area.
In the agreement, it's defined as 12 acres and up to 60 equivalent dwelling units.
Did you say, I'm sorry?
12 acres. Up to 60 equivalent dwelling units. And it's a provision that, it wasn't renewed last time we did this, because it automatically expired after five years. So one question we have is should we just leave it in here and have it automatically re-adopted every time we do this? One reason we didn't want to do that is because we thought the municipalities would be having requests, and then, you know, every year we'd be growing a little bit outside the growth boundary. So we wanted to bring it back and get it re-approved every five years. But no municipalities have used that provision yet, so it's not a problem.
It's not a problem. So I won't turn you into one, but I just wanted, and I had a question about, going back to the slide, where are we today? And you were talking about the hydraulic capacity of, at UHJA?
Yes.
And we're at, it seems like about 60% of the total capacity of UHJA?
Yeah.
Seems like it's going up to like 63%. I mean, way below the capacity. Can you talk a little bit about that? And I'm sure I've heard that before. Also, why we have that excess? Do we anticipate growth? Is it just?
Yeah, UHJA, the general rule of thumb is when you reach 75% of the capacity at the plant, you need to start planning for expansion, because although they do a good job with infiltration in the system when it rains, there still are cases when there's heavy rains and more water that goes in. And plus, I think at one time, they anticipated that an equivalent dwelling unit would be using more water, but people are using less water all the time, or pumping less groundwater.
Yeah, I'd forgotten that, yeah.
So the capacity hasn't been consumed as quickly as they thought it would.
So that makes sense, yeah. They need to account for fluctuations.
Yeah. And one other thing is they added another million gallons of beneficial reuse treatment a couple of years ago, so now there's 3 million gallons that could be beneficial reuse, that could be discharged in slap cabin or other places, or used by businesses or industries.
Thanks, I'd forgotten that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
That's the chair.
Okay.
Good evening, Jim. My question is, as we continue to review the materials we were given, can we request that you return? I know you mentioned that you need a vote by August?
Yeah, we'd like to get this to general forum in August, around that time. So, yeah, I'd be happy to come back if anything you want me to address, that'd be fine.
Should we set a tentative month to do this and then follow up?
Yeah, I, since we're missing our other colleague, I would like to give him an opportunity to ask questions as well.
Sure, I'd be happy to work with Amy and say...
Target July?
Yeah. We have one, one meeting in July?
Yes, one meeting.
Except three meetings this summer.
Is it okay with the rest of the board?
Fine.
Okay, thank you.
If we have to change it, we'll change it, but at least that way we know it's in the schedule.
And so the idea is just to have Jim president to answer any questions?
Yeah.
Does she come up? Should we, will we leave it? Okay.
Be happy to do it.
Jim believes in good planning.
Well, thank you. Just like forecasting, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, any other, any other concerns? Thank you so much for stopping by.
You're welcome. It's good to see you all.
Which brings us to public safety, which has apparently no items.
Actually, we skipped one.
Oh, I skipped one.
The Climate Action Plan.
Climate action, and that's for information only, but set the climate right, yes.
So I want to thank Ms. Farkas for putting it on the agenda, and it turns out, it needed to be on the agenda. So this is essentially a committee report. I misunderstood the process, the steps that we were going to be taking in essentially all the different municipalities, looking at the 82 action items that are suggested in the CAP, this Climate Action and Adaptation Plan. And at some point, we will go through all of those. We, the committee, the Climate Action Sustainability Committee, the individual members of that will go through, are going through these 82 items and designating whether they're regional or municipal, or something in between, and then making any comments. And then we will, as a committee, come up with a reduced number of action items and then bring them back to the municipalities. I asked for this to be on the agenda, because I thought that we had to have both actions done by early June, and I, just in my fog this last month, I misconstrued that. So, suffice it to say that you now have been alerted to this exciting item that will be coming to us probably in July or August.
Yes.
And I say exciting, because one of the shorter is now, but it will help our committee understand more what people who are not involved in the nuts and bolts, what your perception of it is, which will in turn help us understand what the general public probably perceives as important moving forward. And in this process of making steps, it is important for us to make the right ones, ones that will be accepted or understood, and if not, we'll follow with communication explanations. So, that's...
I have a question. In reading Science Magazine, I don't follow all the articles, but climate is a big deal, and many times there are new developments and changes to previous things. Is there a way that the Climate Action Group can tap into the knowledge of people at the university who are concentrating in this, so that obsolete ideas fall by the wayside and new ones are introduced quickly?
Yeah. So, because we have not implemented anything right now, and we're still on the beginning stages, we haven't built that into the plan. What we do have right now is something called a technical advisory group, that it has, there is one group that advised in the compilation of these items, and then there's a second group, different individuals that are advising in setting priorities for these items. Two very different steps. The next step will be the actual implementation. We have not specifically said that we are going to consider, you know, adaptations to this plan as new technology comes along, but that is something that we will do. It's a good question, fair question.
Now, let's say I'm a student residing in Patent Township, and I'd like to become involved in this. What should I do?
Contact the, actually, there's two ways. Go onto the Council of Government website. Two contact points. One would be the Climate Action and Sustainability Committee, and the other action would be to click on the page called "Centre Sustains," C-E-N-T-R-E sustains. So there's, one is, the latter one is more of an entry level, sort of a summary of what's going on, and the Climate Action and Sustainability Committee would have the detailed information on this. And there's also a separate link specifically to what we call the CAP, Climate Action and Adaptation Plan.
Right.
Does that make sense?
Any other questions? Questions, comments? Okay, then move right along. Now, I guess we're up to public safety, and there are no issues, right?
All good.
Okay. And now, public works, and we're going to have an excellent report here by Ken Soder, who's been following these critters during the course of the spring.
We did last week, the spongy moth control program was completed on May 16th, just before 8:00 in the morning. I think going forward, if we spray again next year, there were a few questions we had received. We'll probably provide a little more information regarding the times that it potentially could happen. Some individuals were concerned, because basically, the aerial application started as soon as daylight was permitting them to be able to see, to, tried to get out there early enough when, first off, it was calm, secondly, we had the least amount of pedestrians out. And they also did complete the application that was ground applied. We had three locations in the Village of Penn State, where we have some street trees that are oak varieties that were sprayed as well. So, really, we only received two calls on the 16th, and both of those callers, whenever we explained what it was, they had both recognized, you know, that they had gotten information and so forth, and just kind of forgot that it was going to be happening. So, all in all, I think we were very good with the application timing and so forth. The weather worked out well for us this year as well, so I think we probably should have got the best rate of control that we could get in the areas that we had the application.
That's really great.
Okay.
Just one comment. I apologize for not looking up on the website to see what kind of publicity we had about it. I know Soki pushed out some information. I did see those came into my inbox. Monty suggests that in a future year, if we didn't do it already, we have a link to a health organization, the National Institutes of Health, so that people concerned about any repercussions to humans could go to that website. I, we did actually get one email to that effect, somebody concerned about that. And I also might add that I was almost one of those phone callers on Tuesday morning. I also completely forgot, so I thought it was surveillance. So I thought if I'd had the chief's personal, you know, chief, please reassure me. Anyway, so, I'm glad that it went well.
Yeah, the atmosphere is most stable at that hour, so tend not to have dispersion outside the area that you're trying to spray. Okay, which brings us to engineering, planning, and zoning, right?
Yes. So, this is our annual presentation about our MS4 program. It's going to rival the excitement of the accounting presentation, so we'll move on from there. No, that's fine. Everyone has the presentation in front of them, so if you want to follow along that way as well, you can. So, I apologize for the fact that it says Rain Barrel Workshop. The reason is, I gave a presentation for the Rain Barrel Workshop with Clear Water Conservancy two weekends ago, so they all got the same presentation. And we also had like a social media blast about it, so if you saw it on there. Yeah. So we're going to talk about the background of the MS, oh, there we go, the background of the MS4 program, the permit and the requirements, why we use rain barrels, and any questions you might have. So on sheet three, you see the slide, "How did we get here?" Briefly, the MS4 program started with the Clean Water Act of 1972, which established the structure to regulate pollutants discharged into the waters of the United States. The National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System is a permit program that controls point source and non-point source discharges into surface waters of the United States. The Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, as well as other states, are authorized by the U.S. EPA to administer the program through permitting and enforcement. In 1983, the governors of Pennsylvania, Maryland, and Virginia signed the original Chesapeake Bay Agreement, which was a simple one-page document. Over the years, it has morphed into a program with defined pollution reduction goals, and in 2016, a new Chesapeake Bay watershed agreement was signed. So, on this slide, you see NPDES, what it stands for, and where MS4 comes from. Municipal Separate Storm Sewer System, so there's four S's. NPDS stands for National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System, and MS4 is the Municipal Separate Storm Sewer System. The MS4 encompasses concentrated stormwater discharge that starts as non-concentrated runoff from municipal-owned land and operations, such as roads, sidewalks, and facilities like the office building and maintenance shop area. This also includes runoff from individual properties that also discharge and utilize the public sewer system. NPDS is a larger program that encompasses other programs, such as industrial wastewater, concentrated animal feed production operations, aquaculture, and stormwater from other sources, such as industrial activities and construction. So here are some permit tidbits for you. MS4 applies in urbanized areas where there are over 10,000 people per square mile, so we have urbanized area here in Patent Township. The first center-region permits were issued in 2003. Each successive permit term is five years. Our current permit expires on June 30th, 2025. Our permit cycle starts July 1st and ends June 30th. Annual reporting to DEP is 90 days after the permit date, and MS4 permit covers discharges to and from township-owned facilities, municipal roads, municipal land, and municipal operations. So as a part of being in MS4, we have to do the following, we have the following requirements. We have to implement a stormwater management plan that includes stormwater sewer shed, BMP mapping, a stormwater ordinance, which we have, standard operating procedures, track activities in progress towards goals, we have annual reporting, and we have the Chesapeake Bay Pollution Reduction Plan. So in this permit cycle, we have to reduce sediment, nitrogen, and phosphorus by 10%. On this slide, you see the six minimum control measures, MCMs. There are public education, public involvement, illicit discharge detection and elimination, construction site runoff management, post-construction stormwater management, and good housekeeping and pollution prevention. The first item is public education. As you probably saw in our newsletters, we always have like a one-page ad, as depicted here in the slide. So we have to develop a written public education and outreach program, and we send out educational material and track who gets it. Public involvement. On the slide, you see the watershed cleanup day that's also held every year. It's in April. We develop written public involvement participation plan, provide opportunities for public involvement like the watershed day, the Boy Scouts inlet stenciling project, and also like the Rain Barrel Workshop, Rain Barrel Workshop I referenced already. Illicit discharge detection, stormwater illicit discharge reporting with the new permit has been ramped up to include reporting of non-compliance discharges to DEP immediately or within 24 hours, depending upon the nature of the pollutants discharged. This increased reporting is based on current PA DEP regulations. For instance, washing your car with... For instance, washing your car with detergent is a pollutant discharge. Only car washing without detergent is permitted under the new MS4 permit. Do you have any questions about that point?
Yeah, so, exactly how do we track, keep an eye on these transgressions if somebody's washing with a detergent? How do, how are you alerted to that?
Yeah, that's a good question. So, sometimes we get calls of people saying, hey, someone seems to be dumping something suspicious in that inlet.
I remember that, one incident.
Yeah, so usually, it's either by observance or by a resident phone call.
And detergent, that, I don't know if a lot of people know what that means. I don't even know what that means.
Soap.
Just soap?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, it's okay if you wash your car in the grass, but if you wash your car in the driveway and it goes into the storm sewer system, then it would be considered an illicit discharge.
And, you know, I don't even think I knew that.
Just an FYI.
Well, thank you, I consider myself educated, but I'm wondering if there's a way, and I know we do the thing in the newsletter every week, but every, annually, I guess is what it is.
Yes.
But even calling out a specific thing like that, I think a lot of people use detergent on their car. I would think they would. And so, we just simply have to say, if you're doing that, do it on your grass?
Correct.
Is that correct?
Yeah, that's.
So then it infiltrates?
So that it infiltrates into the ground.
And doesn't, and?
And doesn't enter in the storm sewer system and end up in the Chesapeake Bay.
Exactly.
Right.
Yeah, exactly, okay.
You can always tell a new gain user.
I'm sorry?
You can always tell a new user of gain detergent, a first-timer.
Sorry, I'm having a trouble hearing tonight.
Well, there you gave yourself away.
I haven't heard it, okay. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
That's from a detergent commercial.
I don't want you, okay, I probably don't understand the reference.
I wanted to pause on that because during the Rain Barrel Workshop, the residents also wanted me to talk about it, so.
Okay.
Alex, what number should our residents call? Are we calling, or what department are we calling when we see the dumping?
You can, I think you can call my depart, you can call Engineering, Planning, and Zoning.
Okay.
Yes.
At the parks, there's a phone number to call for enforcement on the dog ordinance. Is this the same number or is it a different number?
That's a good question. I assume that number is the same as our, is the office phone number. Yeah, the office line.
Okay.
Yeah, it's the same number.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah?
I have an observation on the non-illicit discharges, which I don't think you put up there yet. All municipalities treat, in the wintertime, treat their roads with salt.
Yes.
Salt treatment of roads is not included as a non-illicit discharge, yet it is certainly a pollution. It's a chlori, chloride.
Sodium chloride.
So it pollutes the discharge into stormwater systems. Do we have legal exemption, townships? Do they have legal exemption? Or how do we handle that in terms of our MS4 permit?
That is a good question, I'll follow up on. Because I don't know the answer to that.
Okay, you don't have an answer, all right.
Yeah, I don't know the answer to that.
I just know the biggest pollution problem is from the nutrients, nitrogen and phosphorus, and that changes the ecology, basically the body of water, so.
Chloride is also considered a pollutant.
It's a pollutant, but I think it's, it doesn't have the impact, it's a good question still, but I know that what they're talking about here is the, they don't call this word, but the utrification of bodies of water, where, that's where excess algae comes in.
But detergents are not a nutrient.
No, but they have nitrogen and phosphorus in them.
Oh, okay.
And that's the danger to impact the ecology.
I don't remember which year, what year this occurred in, but some studies were done on, okay, what do we do, what happens if we don't use any salt? What happens to our accident and death rates on the highways? And they determined in the study that elimination of salt without a replacement would cost a lot of loss of life and injuries. Now, that doesn't mean there is no problem with it, but that's generally why we've been able to continue to use it rather than have it restricted.
Oh, I would add that not all municipalities use salt. Some use, what's it called, anti-skid? But that's just basically little rocks, and then they end up.
Oh, the cinders.
Yeah.
And they mix it with salt, yeah.
Yeah, so there's a lot of different options. Then, state uses like a brine mix that they pre-treat roads with, that you see those lines on the road, so, we can go on and on about that, but I'll get you an answer about the salt.
Thank you.
Sure. So, the non-illicit discharges listed on this slide include the following. Discharges or flows from firefighting activities, oh no, sorry, let me start back at the beginning. The following are authorized by this permit, as long as such discharges to not cause or contribute to pollution is defined by Pennsylvania's Clean Systems Law. Number one, discharges or flows from firefighting activities. Number two, discharges from potable water sources provided they do not detain detectable concentrations of total residual chlorine. Number three, total content, non-contaminated irrigation water, water from lawn maintenance, landscaping drainage. Number four, diverted stream flows and springs. Number five, non-contaminated pumped groundwater and water from foundation and footing drains and crawl space pumps. Six, non-contaminated HVAC condensation and water from geothermal systems. Number seven, residential vehicle car or wash water where cleaning agents are not utilized. Eight, non-contaminated hydrostatic test water discharges if they do not contain a detectable concentration of TRC. Okay. The municipality permittee or the center county conservation district, through an MOU, memorandum of understanding, enforces construction site runoff regulations via an NPDS construction permit for disturbances greater than one acre or other permits that may be required depending on the work. So, is that clear? Any development that is one acre or larger requires an NPDES permit from DEP? Number five, post-construction. Stormwater facility or BMP owners are required to inspect and maintain the facility or BMPs for which they own and are legally responsible therefore. Next slide. All MS4 permit holders must have a plan for pollution prevention and good housekeeping for their own operations and maintenance. So, there has to be a written prevention pollution, good housekeeping program, develop and implement, maintain written operation and maintenance program, and develop, implement, and employee training program for appropriate topics. So, lastly, this slide shows link to the MS4 Partners website, www.msfourpartners.org. So, we are in partnership with College Township, Ferguson Township, Paris Township, Penn State University, and State College Borough. And so, for more information, please go to their website. Now, this gets into the PRP, the Pollution Reduction Plan, and the 10% sediment reduction I mentioned that's required to be completed by 2025. For the 2018 to 2023 permit DEP in conjunction with TMDL's Chesapeake Pollution Reduction effort is requiring actual modeled reductions in pollutants from permit holders. The reductions are based on modeled reductions because the runoff that is contributing to the pollution is not a point source, but all the land within the individual watersheds. If sediment is reduced by 10%, the nitrogen and phosphorus reductions are automatically assumed for MS4 permit holders. So, the current project that we have currently allocated for this is actually along Meeks Lane, and I'm sure Dan is familiar with, probably with that project. It's actually a stream bank restoration project along Meeks Lane.
Meeks Lane?
Meeks, Meeks Lane. So, I'm in the process of getting.
Oh, you're talking up at where it meets by 50?
No, it's, it's not too far from where you are.
Is it the bottom of the hill where the spring?
It's right before that, it's right before that. Yeah, there's, if you go, if you drive, you'll see it, the stream is, it's eroded the area on the stream.
Somebody filled in that stream two years ago, the stream that runs.
Oh, that's a separate discussion. We can talk about that sometime if you want to. So, anyway, that's what the project I'm looking to complete this year, or next year. The steps for the CR, PRP, describe the drainage area. Number two, estimate and model the current pollutant loads of nitrogen, phosphorus, and sediment being discharged from the MS4 annually to surface waters in the Chesapeake Bay watershed. And number three, develop plan of action to reduce pollutants. Number four is on the next slide, identifying and control measure that will be implemented to reduce pollutant loads, the Chesapeake Bay watershed from the MS4. So, those are the different things that have to be completed with that. For impaired waters without a TMDL, many of the streams creeks within the MS4 Partners boundaries do not have a total maximum daily load for pollutant. A TMDL is more common of a point source such as an outfall of a wastewater treatment plant or an acid mine drainage. So, by using a rain, this is about rain barrels, but by using a rain barrel, you're helping to disconnect the impervious area that is your roof. When you are using it to, when you use it to water your lawn or garden, you are allowing the water to infiltrate and recharge the groundwater as well as being used by plants. And then, the, this slide says, how can a rain barrel help? Number one reason, it disconnects the impervious area from the storm sewer system. And any other questions? I apologize for the length of the presentation, it was longer. I took some slides out.
It's fine.
Great.
Concerning the Rain Barrel Workshop?
Yes.
Do you know if there are any other workshops on that land in the area? I saw the one that you gave, and wasn't I able to go to it?
That's the only one I'm aware of, but I can certainly ask Clearwater if they know about ours.
Oh, that'd be great.
Yeah.
I'd even be willing to travel for that. Thank you so much.
The cost is relatively inexpensive, it's $35. If you try to buy a rain barrel on Amazon, it's over 100, so, just FYI.
Oh, because when you go to the workshop, they give you the rain barrel?
Yeah, they give you the rain barrel, and they teach you how to, you know, drill it and you do everything.
That's great, that's great.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think my husband went to one similarly, that was similarly set up for this garden, home composting, and we got a composter. Gratitude for attending the workshop, yeah, thank you.
Any other issues, concerns, questions? Thank you for the excellent report.
Thank you.
Which brings us to, that I'm not looking at. We're up to the temporary use?
Yes.
Yes. Temporary use request from Walmart.
Yes, so Walmart has requested a temporary use permit for 35 storage containers during their Back to College event from June 1st, 2023, to September 30th, 2023. The store has held temporary use permits for storage containers a number of times in the past. 2017 and '18, the number of containers requested was 25. Beginning in 2019, the following conditions were applied to the temporary use permits for storage containers. Number one, outdoor activities related to the containers that produces unreasonable or excessive noise is prohibited between the hours of 7:00 PM and 7:00 AM. Number two, Patton Township Police Department shall monitor the use related to the hours above hours of use restriction. The department shall make a report of their findings to the board at their July 19th and August 16th and September 13th meetings, so three meetings. All containers shall be removed by this, from the site by 7:00 PM on October 1st, 2023. You can call, they will call a Patton Township zoning officer for final inspection upon completion of the project. And the following was in addition requested by Nicole Carter, our zoning officer. She would like to see this added to the permit, that the Board of Supervisors reserves the right to withdraw the permit if condition one is not followed, that is the condition related to the hours. I do not know if Chief or Amy received any comments on this?
I did not.
Okay. No? So, I'm asked the board to discuss and consider whether or not they would issue this temporary use permit with the conditions listed above.
A lot of these conditions on it came about because some residents were extremely upset about what was going on at all hours of the night.
Correct.
And so, we clipped that. Right. Ken?
Chief, have we had any complaints since we put this in, since we started this?
Yep, so, July 26th of 2019, we did receive a call from a resident that a forklift was being operated, it was unfounded. The officers got there and did not see anybody. Since our agency has been doing checks as condition number, number two, one time, an officer did encounter somebody after 7:00 PM and before 7:00 AM, a Walmart employee on a forklift in that area. So, we provided a warning to them and to the overnight management to make sure they understood that condition, but since, that's the only two instances we've had since 2019.
Chief, again, was there an incident also where the containers were not moved, removed from the site by the?
That's more of a zoning, but I believe that might be true.
Yeah, yeah, I think that was true, but Nicole was able to coordinate that with the store manager of Walmart, and then they did remove the containers.
They've always been very cooperative.
Yes.
When we've confronted them or reminded them of the ordinance, I think.
Yeah, that's been my experience with them.
Yeah. So, I guess I, I think it's a, I'm a little concerned about the reserving the right to withdraw the permit unless we qualify that by saying, you know, after two warnings or something. It sounds a little harsh, given that we've had a very good history with them. That's my only concern, and I think if we put that clause in there, that we would still continue to have a good relationship with Walmart. It seems like the history would back that up.
I'd like to respond to that. Chief, the police department's normal policy is to issue warnings initially, anyway.
Generally, yes.
So, I don't think we need to qualify that statement because the normal procedure is to issue warnings.
Oh, okay.
So, it would only come to us if warnings have been issued and Walmart has not.
Complied.
Complied with the requirements.
So, you're suggesting that we not change the wording? You're suggesting then that we not change the wording?
No, not change the wording. I'm suggesting we accept this proposed addition without changing the wording.
I agree with that.
I'm okay with that, thanks, man.
Is there?
I move that we approve this temporary use permit.
It's been moved.
Addition of this.
Temporary.
Reserves a right to withdraw the permit if condition one is not followed.
It's been moved, is there a second?
I can second that.
It's been seconded? Any other discussion, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that passes.
Thank you.
So, we're now up to administration, but sadly, there are no items.
I feel bad.
We're sorry, we'll try harder next time.
I know you do. Consent agenda.
Mr. Chair, I would like to pull the first, the B1 street closing request on Highland Drive, because I have questions that were not answered in the materials that we were providing, so I'd like to pull that from the consent agenda.
Oh, sure.
I'm sorry, which one are we pulling?
The Highland Drive Street closing request.
So, that'll be handled separately?
Yes, correct.
No, I forget, I forget the last time we did this, does that mean we talk about it now?
Should we talk about that now or wait till after the rest of the consent agenda items have been voted on?
So, why don't you vote on the rest of the consent agenda items, and then you can talk about that.
That sounds like a plan.
So, Mr. Chair, I move we accept the consent agenda as modified with the removal of the street closing request on Highland Drive.
Okay, it's been moved, is there a second?
I'll second, please.
Okay, any further discussion?
Discussion, I just need to ask Amy, do? Discussion, I just need to ask Amy, did we update the minutes?
We did, in fact, update the minutes to reflect that Mr. Snyder agreed with what the board discussed with the Center Region Building Housing Code, yep.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thanks for raising, thanks for mentioning that. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. And now we can talk about it.
Yes. There was no reason given on the permit request or in the material in our agenda as to why they're requesting disclosure of this block or this section of the Highland Drive from 3:00 PM to 8:30 on July 1st. What's the event? What do they, what do they need barricades for? Why are they?
Yeah, we believe it's a block party, a neighborhood gathering. And that's something that Supervisor Rob had told me about this earlier. And I know that Mr. Soder had said that in the past, we did used to have the reason on the permit, so we'll add that so that it's a little clearer next time. But I think we typically, talking with Ken today, we typically get a bunch of these in the summer and people want to get together with their neighbors and have block parties.
Do, do we anticipate noise? Are they gonna have like amplified music or anything? We don't know, right? We don't know what they're gonna do.
No, we don't know what their plans are.
Normally, when we ask a, someone asks for a request like this, we notify the neighborhood that this, this is, we received this request. I don't know if that's appropriate for this particular kind of a, a request.
If you want, I could certainly reach out to the resident that made the request and get a little bit more information, and you could take action on it at your June meeting if you want to table it. We can certainly do that.
Yeah.
So that, that would still leave time to?
Yeah, she's requesting for July 1st, and your June meeting is June 21st. So I'm happy to get more information if you would like.
Yeah.
I would like to give our, the residents in this area an opportunity to be informed that this, we received this quest, and do they have any objections?
Yeah, I'll reach out. I, I have a feeling if it's a block party, the neighbors probably already know, but.
I understand, but it, it also eliminates the ability for people to drive up and down when that section is closed.
Yep.
So is, is there someone in that section who wants access, ingress, ingress access with their vehicle during the block party? Just because two people signed it doesn't mean that everybody in the closed section agrees to this request.
Okay, we'll find that out, then.
Yeah. So, yeah, I would say let's not approve this yet until that publicity is in place.
That's deferred to next month, then.
Okay. And I like Mr. Soder's idea, Ken's idea, or somebody said about changing the form to include that. That's good. Because I'm, I'm, I just assumed it was a block party and whatever, so. Not good to assume.
Okay, that's the last item in this. Which brings us to the truly exciting portion of our meeting, which is the manager's report.
I'm sorry if you're excited for this. So two things, first of all, I forgot to include the correspondence in the agenda, so I'm already batting a thousand over here, but just two things. We had an accessibility audit done from the state of Pennsylvania on some businesses within the township. It's something that Walt Schneider says they do every five years, and it's a routine thing. I did include a copy of that at your place tonight, so you have that. And then we get monthly housing reports from the Center County Association of Realtors that just tells you how the housing market is, new listings, closings, that kind of thing. So I included that in your report as well, at your place tonight as well, in case you have any questions about that. Just a couple of upcoming events. Of course, we're closed Monday for Memorial Day. We're closed on Juneteenth, and we'll also be closed for the July 4th holiday. If you haven't already noticed, it's bulk pickup week, which means all the pickers are out picking the good stuff off the sidewalks before the trash man gets to it. And just a reminder that May 30th, curbside collection of refuges and recycling moves to 6:00 AM start time.
Good reminder.
And all the refuges will be picked up with the, and recycling will be a day later because of the?
Yes, because of the holiday, yep. Yep, so I have, if you have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer them.
Okay, any committee reports?
Yes.
Pam, go ahead.
Well, my report, we had a update that was given by Sean Kaufman, our fire coordinator and director and EMS coordinator. We also had a presentation by LifeLink, the university EMS, Port Matilda EMS, which gave us an update on the different calls that they had. What I would like to do is also, at our general forum meeting, we discussed the sinkhole. I did research on the different insurance companies as I brought forth, and I'm asking our residents who are homeowners to review their policy, their homeowner policy, to make sure they have a rider or an attachment regarding sinkholes. A lot of the insurance companies do not have it. Those insurance companies that do, I do know, I had them put it up on the screen. The first one is Nationwide. It's also a insurance company here in State College. Michael Douglas is the agent. They're located at 925 West College. Their number is 814-238-6038. The next insurance company that also has a sinkhole rider is Allstate Insurance. Their number is 800-255-7828. The next one is State Farm Insurance. Their number is 814-954-4849. And the last that I've gotten a fee, a call back from was the Farmers Insurance that is here in State College. Their number is 814-954-4135. I'm also asking, I, if you know any other insurance companies that do have sinkhole insurance, to please notify our township so we can get that information out on our website and in our newsletter. Sinkholes are beginning to be talked about. And it's being talked about not only through our residents, but through our elected officials. I was fortunate to attend the PSEP conference, and during that conference, sinkhole was, and landslides were topics. When I got home, I realized we received a magazine from the organization. It's called Pennsylvania Township News. And this is what it looks like. The front page talks about township works hard to keep communities on solid ground. And on there is losing ground, how to minimize sinkholes and other geo hazards. As I opened up the magazine, I came across page 24 that happened to have Patent Township sinkhole in it with the story. So we are probably the talk of sinkholes. And we need to get that information out to our residents and our constituents, not only through Patent Township, but through our residents in the Center County area. And I'm asking any homeowner, please check your policy, your homeowner's policy, to make sure you have flood rider, and it's called ground subsidence or sinkhole rider. It's just a little more money, but it is so important that you have that. So I thank you, and I thank my colleagues for the opportunity to get this information out to our constituents, to our neighbor townships. This information is growing, information about our areas and sinkholes in our areas. It's not for just patent today, it could be any municipalities tomorrow. So thank you.
Hi, you're, most of us have seen that commercial where they have mayhem, and if you don't have right coverage, you're gonna have to pay for it. And this is extreme mayhem that is more of a localized thing. It happened to one house, happened to a number, but if we, if you don't have that insurance, it's expensive. Do we have some information on this on our site?
We will add it to our site, for sure. We'll talk to Sophie about that.
Thank you.
Any other committee reports of note? Okay, then we'll dispense with that. And that brings us to, is there any other business?
Yes.
Go ahead.
I would just like to wish my colleagues happy birthday, Dan Torino. And also, I know Elliot's trying to be quiet, but his birthday is coming up as well. Happy birthday to you both.
Thank you. We can't get upset about something that happened so long ago. Okay, is there a move to adjourn?
We'll move.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.